All right, everybody. I think we've cleared out our waiting room and I think we are ready to get started. I would ask that anybody who is currently in the room as I am going through my entry dissertation, if you'd be so kind as to click on your name on the right-hand side of the Zoom window and change your profile name to your full first and last name, just for identification purposes. There we go. All right. As a preliminary matter, this is Kevin Calcutta, Chair of the Norfolk Select Board. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Christopher Weider?
Aye.
There you go. Thanks, Chris. C.C. Van Tine?
I'm here, whatever. I'm present.
Thank you. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Blythe Robinson?
Present.
Judith Lozardi?
Present.
Todd Lindmark?
I'm here.
Thank you very much. All right, good evening. This open meeting of the Norfolk Select Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with Agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations on the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment during the designated points throughout the meeting. For this meeting, the Norfolk Select Board is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the posted Agenda identifying how the public may join. Please note that the meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that then to take care not to share your screen or your computer, anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted Agenda and packet. Few ground rules. I'll introduce each speaker on the Agenda. After they conclude with their remarks, I'll toss it over to the rest of the board for questions and comments. And at appropriate points within the course of the meeting, we'll open it up for public comment at that point. If anybody would like to offer a short Agenda-relevant item, question, or comment, you may use the Raise Hand feature accessed by clicking on the Participants icon on the bottom of your screen and wait to be called on. When recognized, please remember to state your full name and your address prior to your comment. Finally, please note that you will need to be on mute if you are not talking so we cannot hear your heartfelt sigh as I'm going through my dissertation in the beginning of the meeting, and that's not recorded for everybody to hear later on. Thank you very much. All that being said, Blythe, would you mind taking us through our Agenda this evening?
Sure. So first off, I have some COVID-19 updates, followed by public comments. The action items tonight are to consider approving a refunding of the 2012 bond issue and approval of a new bond issue as a result of a bond sale we had yesterday on June 1st. Secondly, to consider executing the warrant for the 2020 annual town meeting. To please consider authorizing the Chair to execute a grant application for federal cares funds incurred in response to the COVID-19 outbreak. After that, to consider making appointments to various boards and committees. Then please consider setting the board's meeting schedule for 2020. And to please consider executing proclamations for a number of Eagle Scouts. Discussion items are to discuss the status of changes to the FY '21 budget to achieve reductions approved by the board. To then discuss future changes to premium cost share for retiree health insurance. To then discuss the reopening plans for town buildings. I have a couple of town minister updates to make you aware of. And we have four warrants to be approved and two sets of minutes to be approved.
Thank you very much, Blythe. With that, we'll go into our first item this evening, and that is our COVID-19 update from Town Administrator Blythe Robinson.
So we did not report on last Monday due to the holiday. And this week, we have one new case, so we're at 24. We've hovered around 23, 24 for the last two weeks. So fortunately, we have that many, but it's also heartwarming to see that we haven't had any significant increases in cases. We did receive late yesterday afternoon advice from the state that the Governor issued an emergency order that would enable us to, the Select Board, to vote to make changes to the license premises for sale of alcohol. Probably, if you're following the news, you've noted that the state is considering going into Phase 2 of the reopening plan. They'll make that decision on Saturday. And restaurants will be able to start serving food outdoors initially, and then later stages or later parts of Phase 2 move into indoor. And for us, we have five establishments that have licenses to serve alcohol who may want to be able to change their license premise and be able to sell that outdoors, perhaps on an extended patio or perhaps into a parking lot. So we've made those establishments aware that we passed on the information that we received and told them we're going to be alerting you. We are going to need information from them about what they want to do and how they want to change it in order for the board to vote on it. So I bring it up mostly to make you aware of it. Our next meeting right now is not until the 16th. At this point, I honestly can't say how quickly they'll be able to pull the information together, how quickly we'll be able to review it and check in with various departments, and then package it up and get it to you. We can wait until the 16th, which means they wouldn't be able to serve outside of where they're licensed now until then. Or if we get it quickly, we could possibly consider, if you're available, having a meeting at some point next week so that they can get licensed and be able to sell in a different area as soon as that's done. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. And then lastly, the town clerk's been doing a good job of advertising the vote-by-mail opportunity. And I would just second that, that that is available to residents. And if they want to take advantage of it, that's ongoing right now. Otherwise, the election in person is on Tuesday, June 23rd, as you know, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Freeman County School. Those are my updates.
Thank you very much, Blythe. I'll throw it to the rest of the board. Does anybody have any questions or comments, starting with Chris?
No questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. C.C.?
No, no questions.
Very good. And Blythe, I would just reiterate my point from our last meeting. If there is a way for us to be able to update our restaurant posting on our website to include restaurants that are opening up for outdoor seating or of any seating of any kind, it would be good to be able to note that so folks could tell.
Sure. We'll go through them, so we'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. I do see, Mr. Rosenberg, you have your hand up. This isn't typically a Q&amp;A period as it's Blythe providing an update, but if you have something relevant or for clarification, you have 30 seconds. Go.
I was wondering if you have any information about when the meeting rooms in the library might be usable by citizens, again, either some date that they won't be usable at least until then or anything about when they might become usable. Thank you.
So as I understand the Governor's order, the libraries can be open right now for basically curbside. And in my discussions with the library director, they're targeting July for when they would start to reopen to people coming into the library. So we're working to establish, and I'm going to talk about this more a little bit later on our reopening plan page on our website where we can try to centralize all that information for people, but quick answer is I think it's going to be about another month.
Thanks, Blythe. All right, so we will be moving on to our next item this evening, which is our public comment period. Anybody that is in attendance this evening can use the Raise Hand function at the bottom of your screen by clicking the Participants icon to join us and take the mic for up to three minutes to share a question, comment, or concern relevant to the Select Board or to the Town Administrator. To start off this evening, while everybody is navigating to that button, I have a couple of items to read into the record for public comment. The first one is a correction to a comment that was read in last week. It was in a chat window, and the diligent resident noted that there were two adjectives that were missing. So I will go through and identify the correct verbiage from that chat. This comment was from Anne Marie Battistone, and it reads, "I noticed a very nice car in front of Town Hall, and eventually I saw it was a town car. I am wondering why such apparently expensive cars are necessary and who has chosen them. Maybe there is a savings we can take advantage of if we buy inexpensive serviceable cars going forward." It's my understanding that Blythe and Anne Marie had connected following that meeting to clarify the car, the source of the car, as well as the department head. So Blythe, is there anything else you wanted to add to that follow-up?
No, I think you've covered it, Kevin, unless anyone has any questions.
Very good. Anne Marie, did I cover it this time?
Yes.
Very good. Second time's the charm. You get it eventually. Thank you so much. The second item that I will read into the record is a resident who was unable to attend tonight who sent an email into the board and asked that it be read during the public comment period. This is from Julie Reddits at SixMontauk Ave. She says, "Dear select people, I appreciate you taking the time to consider safety for the upcoming town meeting. I would like to offer some input. I understand that the current thinking is to have the meeting in the high school auditorium. Although it is sizable, I am concerned about having the meeting indoors. If any one or two people have COVID-19, even if they are wearing a mask, they will be breathing into the common air for three hours. That is a long time, and anyone in reasonably close proximity to one of those people, they are likely to catch it. There are plenty of examples of people catching it in an office space, even if they sit well more than six feet away. It has to do with the air circulation and the amount of exposure. All health professionals agree that outdoors is a much safer place to be. If the football field is available to us, there is seating and a sound system. I realize we are dealing with rain possibilities and mosquitoes. I would much rather be exposed to mosquitoes than to COVID-19, and I am a freak about mosquitoes. I would also like to point out that you are excluding people with certain health issues by holding it indoors. This seems discriminatory. Everyone deserves equal opportunity to vote on town matters. I make it a priority to attend town meetings, but I do not think that I would be able to attend if it is indoors as our household has members with weakened immune systems. I could not risk the exposure. I know this is the case with many other households. I agree that indoors is a much more convenient for many people, especially those planning it, but it is not safer and it is exclusionary. Please reconsider having it outdoors. Sincerely, Julie Reddits." Thank you, Julie. Blythe, did you want to talk briefly to the point of where we're holding town meeting in our walk-through today?
Sure. So we looked at not only the auditorium, but there's also two rooms that are fairly close adjacently to that auditorium, both the gymnasium and the cafeteria. And so one of the things that we thought was beneficial about that was that we could socially distance people in three different spaces. And I think we felt we could easily accommodate 300 people, all sitting at least six feet apart or more perhaps, and that that was a good outcome in terms of giving people the chance to not be as close proximity to others as possible. And that the technology in that location was very good to enable us to make sure everybody had a chance to be involved in the proceedings, hear what's going on, and so on. So I also know from talking to the custodial staff there that they have spraying equipment to be able to do a good cleaning of the rooms before our meeting. In fact, both the Plainville and Rantham meetings will be held there the two nights prior, so they've got a whole process established by which they're going to be taking care of that in between each one so that it's safe for each community to be there.
Thanks, Blythe. I know that we're going to be doing some assessing over the next couple of weeks, but as of right now, we will be indoors at the high school. It is just a matter of which areas we will be in, and we'll be determining that over the course of the next couple of weeks. All right. I've done enough talking for a little while. Does anybody would like to share tonight for public comment? I see one hand up. Susan Klein, go right ahead.
Hi, I would just like to ask again, same thing as Julie, to please consider having it outside at the football field at the high school. Same location. You can always move inside if it rains. It is much safer and will likely end up with a better turnout than if you have it indoors. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Do we have anybody else who would like to share this evening for a public comment period? If so, please use the Raise Hand function. If you are unable to find it, wave in a crazy fashion at your screen. All right. Since I'm seeing neither, we will move on to our next item this evening, which is to please consider approving a refunding of the 2012 bond issue and approval of a new bond issue as a result of a bond sale on June 1st, 2020. Blythe, would you like to provide a little bit of background?
Yes, I will. I'll start that, and then Todd is available with more detailed answers if the board has any specific questions. So as you know, last fall, we authorized the road work and the purchase of a roll-off truck. Prior to that, we also had approved the replacement of the H. Olive Day roof. So we needed to place debt for those items, as well as take an opportunity to refund and refinance a 2012 bond issue that was for the Freeman County School, take advantage of more competitive interest rates that are available today. And then we had a small rollover of a bond anticipation note that we also needed to take care of this year. So we held those sales yesterday. We received very competitive rates for the bond issue and refinancing. We received a rate of just over 1.03%, and for the ban, we received a rate of 1.34%. So we posted on with the Agenda, the official statement. I don't know if anyone had a chance to read all 139 pages. It's actually, I think, quite interesting readings. A lot of background about the town. But we had good participation in the sale. I think seven bidders for the large issue and less than that, four or five for the ban. But we were pleased with the outcome. It will save the town money over time. And so tonight's action would be to award those and read an extremely long motion. I apologize for that. It's kind of like selling a house almost, lots of words and then lots of signatures to follow. Once the board approves it, we will need you to stop by in the next couple of days and execute all of those documents. So we can go into much more detail if you'd like. Just let us know.
I don't see a very long motion here. Do I have an old packet?
We emailed it to you yesterday.
Okay, while I try to get my act together. Chris, do you have any questions on the Agenda item for Blythe?
I don't. I think it's great that we've got a favorable rate. I think that's super. Obviously, we've got some work to do with our finances, with our ratings as we move forward, but it's good to see the rate was down around 1%.
Thank you, Chris. C.C., any questions for Blythe?
No, no, no questions at all. If you want me to draw out the time while you look for the motion, I can speak really slowly, but no, I don't have any questions.
Yeah, I'm not seeing it in my email. Chris, do you have it in front of you?
I'm looking right now.
I need to get into the town system to be able to get to my email.
Here we are.
You sent this yesterday, Blythe?
All right, Blythe, I have it here now. It is the Word document that is actually for the clerk of the Select Board. Am I correct?
Yes.
Oh, that's too bad. That is really bad news. Hold on, let me see if I can sign it now. Or you want to email it to me? Hold on. Is it the one that was entitled "Bond Info"?
That's the one. It's the Word document, the first attachment.
I have to download. I'm doing it on my phone because you guys are on my... Oh, here we go, Word document. Oh, crikey.
Yes, it's long.
Yeah, and that is my... Okey-dokey. All right. It will be kind of slow because it's on the tiny screen. And so am I doing anything other than just reading this? Is there any grand...
Just reading all page and three quarters.
Okey-dokey. All right. "I, the clerk of the Select Board of the Town of Norfolk, Massachusetts, parenthetically, the Town, certify that at a meeting of the board held June 2nd, 2020, of which meeting of which all members of the board were duly notified and at which a quorum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the board in my custody. Voted that in order to reduce interest costs, the Treasurer is authorized to issue refunding bonds at one time or from time to time pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 21A of the General Laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority to refund all or a portion of the town's $4,344,000 general obligation school bonds dated April 1st, 2012, maturing on April 1st in the years 2021 through 2024, inclusive 2026, 2028, 2030, and 2032, in the aggregate principal amount of $2,580,000, parenthetically, the refunded bonds, and that the proceeds of any refunding bonds issued pursuant to this vote shall be used to pay the principal and interest on the refunded bonds and costs of issuance of the refunding bonds. Further voted that the sale of the $3,950,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2020 bonds of the Town dated June 15th, 2020, parenthetically, the bonds, to Piper Sandler and Company at the price of $4,370,680.26, and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bonds shall be payable on April 1 of the years and in the principal amounts and bear interest at their respective rates as follows. Year 2021, amount $360,000, interest rate 5%. Year 2022, $350,000, interest rate 5%. Year 2023, $350,000, interest rate 5%. 2024, $355,000 at 5%. In 2025, $350,000 at 5%. In 2026, $320,000 at 5%. In 2027, $325,000 at 2%. 2028, $325,000 at 2%. 2029, $320,000 at 2%. 2030, $315,000 at 2%. 2031, $295,000 at 2%. 2032, $285,000 at 2%. It is further voted to approve the sale of a $100,000, 1.34% general obligation bond anticipation note of the Town dated June 26, 2020, and payable June 25, 2021, parenthetically, the note, to Norwood Bank at par and accrued, if any. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated May 22, 2020, and a final official statement dated June 1, 2020, parenthetically, the official statement, each in such form as may be approved by the Town Treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that the bonds shall be subject to redemption at the option of the Town upon such terms and conditions as are set forth in the official statement. Further voted that the Town Treasurer and the Select Board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with the SEC Rule 15C2-12 in such form as may be approved by Bond Counsel to the Town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds as applicable for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the Town Treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the Town Treasurer and Bond Counsel deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the bonds and to comply with relevant securities laws. Further voted that each member of the Select Board, the Town Clerk, and the Town Treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, time, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda includes the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the Town Clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal building that the office of the Town Clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with the alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General, is set forth in 940 CMR 29.02 Subsection 2B at least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting, and remains so posted at the time of the meeting that no deliberations or decision in connection with the sale of the bonds and note were taken in executive session, all in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 38, Sections 18 through 25 as amended, and all as further suspended, supplemented, or modified by the executive order of the Governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20, dated March 12, 2020."
I'm sorry, I missed that. Can you say it one more time?
Yeah, and there's no motion. That's not a motion. So am I moving to approve what I just read? Because, all right, I moved that that whole amount of information that I just read that did not include, I move, be... What am I asking? Be approved, I guess, right? Because the motion in here says that we moved that the board vote to award the bonds. So...
That was a placeholder.
No, I understand that that was a placeholder, but am I just moving to approve that which I just read?
Correct.
All right. Then I move to approve that which I just read into the record, and I'm sure which is available at all sorts of locations for people to read and parse out the lack of things like Oxford commas and so forth.
I second that motion. Do we have any further discussion?
None from me.
I'm hearing none. Open it up to anybody in the public who would like to comment. I'm seeing no hands raised. So we'll be moving on that second. Hearing no further discussion, we'll take a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutta, aye?
Christopher Weider, aye.
C.C. Van Tine, aye.
It passes unanimously. Thank you so much, C.C., for doing that. That brings us to our next item this evening, which is to please consider executing the warrant for the 2020 annual town meeting. Blythe, I know you've been working on this just about every day for the last couple of weeks. Where are we right now?
We are pleased to have included your package. We are pleased to have included your packet and then sent you this afternoon what we think is a final version of the warrant for your execution for the meeting on June 24. The reason I say final is that also in your packet is an email and a document from a resident who wants to, would like the Board to consider adding an item with regards to establishment of a finance committee. But setting that aside for one minute, just to bring you up to, everyone up to date, the warrant has changed a bit over time as we had moved the date of the meeting and the date of the election, and then actually the date, the location of the meeting. As you know, it's usually at the middle school, but for health and safety reasons, we determined that the high school is a better option. So in the last week, as you know, our bylaws don't allow for us to have the meeting out of town, and as of late last week, we had not, state legislation to allow us to have it out of town had not passed. And in fact, I think it still hasn't. So we, through our Town Council, filed in Superior Court for injunctive relief to enable us to hold it out of town, and we had a hearing before Judge Connors with Town Council and the moderator yesterday morning, and that our request was granted to enable us to have the meeting at the high school or just on an abundance of caution, any other contiguous town. So in your packet is the warrant, and there are, and the correspondence from the resident interested in having you add an article. And then there are two motions for you to vote on. First of all, as I'm sure you know from our Town's bylaws, the Board needs to approve any action that's legal affairs, is to prosecute compromise suits, and filing this injunctive relief document requires the Board's vote, so that's the first motion to be approved. And then the second motion is to actually, is to execute the warrant and clarify that the meeting is going to be held out of town in accordance with the ruling by the Norfolk Superior Court. The other thing I would bring up is that after the Board last met, Advisory met, and so the document does include a number of their positions on articles. They haven't finished their work. They're going to do that tomorrow night, so you'll see changes there. And then today, Town Council pointed out that we should add a few more words to the article regarding Nichols Road to allow the Board to handle any easements or other actions relative to accepting a street, and it would be better to have that in the article than the motion, so that was the last change that we made. So that's an overview, and then we can go into any questions or details that you would like.
Thank you, Blight. Just one point of clarification. I know that one of our efforts to try to keep this engagement and interaction for town meeting to a limited timeframe, we tried to condense the articles as much as possible for this time meeting. Is that correct?
Yes, there were a number of articles, an early version of the warrant related to zoning changes for Southwood Hospital that had been first proposed by the Planning Board. They have withdrawn all of those, but those came off, and then in that time afterwards, we received two citizens petitions. So right now, we're at 24 articles. Well, I would point out that there are a number of articles that we will indefinitely postpone. For instance, there are no unpaid prior year bills. We have no plans to ask for any capital items to be approved. So there are things that we can go pass quickly, and then I know the moderator is considering a consent calendar for a number of articles that are pretty routine. Everyone, people who come to time meeting regularly know that we're going to approve Chapter 90 spending and acceptance of grants, and so he's planning to try to household, if you will, four or five articles could be passed all at once to also help the meeting move along as quickly as possible.
Thank you. I don't necessarily have any other questions on the warrant. I'll throw it over to my fellow board members, starting with C.C. Any questions or comments on the warrant?
So is it appropriate just to ask a question about a warrant article? Is that what this is? You know, am I allowed to? Okay. Because I had one, and of course, now I can't find my notes. So can I defer to Chris while I recoup, recover from reading that and find... I did have a question, but of course, now I can't find it. So can I feed my...
Deferal approved.
Thank you.
Chris, what do you have for us?
Uh, Blight, so we have 24 warrant articles, and then we have two citizen petitions. Is that how it's going to move forward?
There's a total of 24, including the two citizen petitions, so 20 of the Towns, if you will, and two citizen.
Okay.
So of course, you add the item submitted last week that's in your packet.
Say that again?
Unless you choose to add the item that was submitted by Mr. Chipman, that he would like the Board to sponsor that's in your packet.
Okay.
Would be number 25.
Okay. C.C., I'll throw it back to you if you're ready.
All right, well, I found it, and I see my scribbles underneath it. I figured out the answer all on my own, so that's so great. So I don't have any questions regarding the 24 articles. So as relates to the articles that are already on the warrant, I have no question.
Thank you very much. So I'll hold off on doing motions until we address the last proposal. So we did receive an email from a resident who was looking for us to sponsor another article onto the warrant. This article was intended to create a FINCOM in town, our Finance Committee. I think I have some questions about the petition as a whole, especially in that we have an existing Advisory Committee that serves the same purpose in terms of review. I understand that there are some functions of FINCOM that might differentiate them from an Advisory Committee, but in speaking with the moderator, I don't believe that the intent is for there to have, for both of them to exist in a single municipality. So I think I'm just, in an elongated way, saying that I'd like to learn more about this and maybe get some more feedback from external resources on the feasibility of executing something like this. I just don't know if we have the time to do that, considering we'll be approving the warrant in about 10 minutes. So I think from my position, I would like to learn more about the proposal. I would like to learn more and get some more input from external resources about the feasibility of what's being proposed, but I do not believe that this is something that I'd like to turn around quickly for Springtown Meeting this year. I will open it up to the rest of the board members for their opinion, starting with C.C.
So I have a question, and I... Apologies for sounding dumb, but I couldn't even find the word dumb. But what's the, what's the rule, and maybe someone can, I'll open it for anyone, about people asking the Select Board to put on an article versus a citizen's petition? Now, I assume that maybe there wasn't time, what with COVID and the time constraints, to get a citizen's petition, so I understand that. But are there any rules that I should be aware of relative to the Board of Selectmen putting on an article? Because generally, I, my sense is, I can tell you what I think about the article, and I can tell you, but I'm not sure if it's, as long as it's legal, and that's a different question, I'm not sure. What is it that we are allowed to do? Can we say, no, we don't want something to go on, go out and get a citizen's petition? Or if it meets certain requirements, we have to put it on? Am I making sense? Like, what, what's the rule? So I know what I'm functioning within, because now I'll say, just because I can't help myself, but talk all the time. No, I have the similar sort of sense, and it was when I first saw it, I thought, well, you know what? There's been many years. I'm sure Jay's having the same experience now. When I was on the Advisory Committee, and then when I was moderator, and even subsequent there, too, it's really hard to fill the seats of the Advisory Committee, let alone creating a second committee, whether or not you can or not. And then I thought, well, that's more for the town meeting floor. That's my opinion about whether or not something's successful. That's not really for whether or not something gets on, you know, the warrant. So, you know, my reservations about a FINCOM seem more appropriate for the floor of town meeting. So I'm just, does anyone have any insight into what it is that, you know, if anybody brings forth an article that's not unconstitutional or illegal, are we supposed to vote? You know, how do we, what's the story? Thank you. Anybody?
I can start. I believe that the warrant is the responsibility in the ownership of the Select Board. And so you have, you determine what goes on it. You know, absent a general bylaw that says differently, you could determine something doesn't go on it other than citizen petitions. As long as the correct number of signatures are received by the time the warrant is executed, you don't, you can decide. And so you can decide you want to have a bylaw about another topic. That's something the Board wants to promote. You can choose to have staff and Town Council draft that bylaw and put it on the warrant. You do that already by choosing to have articles about grants and Chapter 90 and all the business that the Town does. So if you determine there's business the Town should do, you can put an article on the warrant. It's your warrant. It's important to think about whether or not something is ready to be debated by the Town. In this case, we got it, you know, less than a week before the warrant was to be signed. Advisory's been meeting for, you know, off and on for months. They haven't had a chance to take it up at all, and they won't. So is it ready to be debated? We have not, you not, having had you had a meeting, we haven't given this to Town Council to ask if this is in its proper form to go to town meeting, or if there are any issues you should be aware of that we would want to change if it's your article. Citizen's petition, which is that the citizen wants, and sometimes it's not something the Town otherwise chooses to do, so that's why it's the citizen's language and not ours. So let me stop there and see if that answers your question.
It does. I think, if I'm not mistaken, what you're saying is that if we see something that may be a little rough in a citizen's petition, we sort of deal with it because it's a citizen's petition, sort of like a pro se litigant. When there, things need to be fixed, they can fix them on the floor of town meeting by motions on the floor, but that there should be something a little more, a little cleaner and tighter, and already having been vetted by Town Council before it goes on the warrant? So then my next question is, because it looks pretty sizable, like a lot of thought has gone into it. Has it, have we ever had a situation where we get something, you know, because I'll tell you, that's sort of, I'm torn between allowing it because people should have their issues put on the warrant and pumping it to the fall, like Kevin had indicated. And I understand he wasn't saying definitely the fall, but I would say definitely the fall, such that we could make sure that the verbiage achieves goals that are allowed by whatever statutes, canons of law, et cetera, so that there isn't the same melee in a Board of Selectmen motion as there sometimes is in a citizen's petition. That being said, I'm sure we've all been to town meetings where even our budget has had issues. And, you know, there's frequently motions and amendments happening on the town meeting floor for all sorts of articles. So I'd be interested to hear, so candidly, I'm still a little torn. I'd be interested to hear from Chris.
Yeah, I think, I think it's an interesting article, and I think it definitely is worthy of further consideration, but I don't think we have time before Springtown Meeting to do this. I think it's required work by the Board, work with us and the moderator, work with Blight and Todd Lindmark to discuss this, as well as the Advisory Board, to see if there is a balance with this article, with our current situation, our current structure. So I think it's worthy to consider, but certainly requires a little more work on our part, and maybe we can bring it forward in Fall Town Meeting.
And I like what you said there, Chris, because I had meant to say that. I've actually written a note to say that. That I do think that inasmuch as this impacts the Advisory Committee, I would really be interested in their, their input. Certainly, not that their input is, is, would be the deciding factor, but I think would help understand how to craft an article. If an article actually were to be crafted for town meeting. So I agree with my fellow, with my brethren, and I would love to see this continue to be worked, if that's what they want, for Fall Town Meeting, but not for Spring.
All right. So before we get into our motions, I will open it up for comments from our attendees tonight. If you would like to share a brief question or comment relevant to this agenda item, please use the raise hand function by clicking the participants icon on the bottom toolbar, and we'll call on you in the order that we see you. So the first one that I see is Susan Klein. Go right ahead.
I know, shocking, right? Susan Klein, 11 Kinney Pond. Also, as many of you know, I'm also a member of the Advisory Board, and I would like to clarify something. Blight said that this had not been taken up by the Advisory Board, yet a version of this has been taken up by the Advisory Board. A citizen's petition came before us and requesting something similar, though not an actual finance committee, and it was unanimously rejected. The point being that, the problem with this particular ask is that the way it's structured, it would say that the Select Board appoints people to the Finance Committee, and then the Planning Board takes over the zoning articles, the Select Board takes over approval of everything else. What that essentially does is eliminate the need for an Advisory Board. Both of them would not exist. And then the Select Board would be appointing its own people to a Finance Committee who would be approving the budget that the Select Board puts forth. Same for Planning Board. The Planning Board would be putting forth the zoning articles and then also approving the zoning articles as a recommendation for town meeting. And what that does is eliminate the independent oversight of the Advisory Board, which I think is absolutely necessary. As you can see from this year, we had multiple meetings going back and forth about the budget. You know, we had different views and different outtakes, and then we settled on, with a majority voting in one direction. If you have a Finance Committee, they're appointed by the Select Board. It's going to approve what the Select Board wants. That would be the, in essence, why you would do it. The Advisory Board is an independent board, so it needs to remain an independent board. That is my opinion, and it has been discussed in detail with the Advisory Board. And though I can't say for sure, because we haven't, you haven't passed it and put it on the warrant yet, but I can, based on previous conversations with the previous citizen's petition that came up, I can almost say that the Advisory Board would not support this at town meeting, whether it was now or in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. The next person that we have with a hand raised is Rachel. Rachel, please go ahead.
Hi, my name's Rachel Cochran. I live at Five Standish Road. And I just wanted to comment on what Blight said in the very beginning about the warrant and, and moving the meeting from the middle school to the high school. And I may have missed this in the beginning of the meeting, but I do not think it is safe in any way, shape, or form to have 300 people at the high school. And for people in our town who do not feel comfortable going into the school, the grocery store, store, any public buildings, and of course, it's everybody's own decision what they want to do. I think that the people who are not comfortable with that should also have an option, such as perhaps being outside. Some people could be inside, some people could be outside, but I should have a right to come to town meeting in the way that makes me most comfortable during this pandemic time. And, you know, obviously I, I, I have a junior in high school who's come through all the public schools. I understand that the middle, the middle school, the high school is larger than the middle school, but there's a lot of things that need to be taken into consideration. And, um, you know, I would just urge you to consider all the options for all the different people and all their different situations and all their comfort level, levels, because it is such an important town meeting with all of the budget cuts in the schools and across our town and everybody's voice deserves to be heard.
Thank you, Rachel. Um, the next hand that I see up is Mr. Chitman. Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you, Kevin. I just wanted to clarify, the submittal was put in not to go one way or the other as far, I didn't want to box you into a citizen's petition. I feel that this is something that is important to discuss on a ti- townwide basis. I appreciate, uh, one, you even considering talking about it in the fall. This isn't the first time this has been brought up. And secondly, is breaking out these types of activities is almost overdue. There's other towns that have done it and I think it's important for us to consider as, as a town. The same as I'm assuming that everyone on the advisory committee doesn't vote the way the moderator wants, I'm assuming any appointees by the selectmen aren't just going to go in line with however you folks might appoint people to the committee. Secondly, and more importantly, I want to point out a couple historical items. The actual, and I guess thanks to Carol Green and her research, the advisory committee goes back to 1913. I think they changed some language in 1936, but at that time, I'm sure the farmers needed a break to come out of the field and understand what's happening at town meeting. It was relevant back then for zoning. It was relevant for finances and whatever else might come up on a town meeting warrant. In 1954, the town adopted national law, chapter 41, section 81F, which set a whole new set of ground rules for planning, zoning, other, everything surrounding land development, which is includes holding public hearings for zoning. I didn't want to convolute those pieces. Those were comments I made to be hands wide open where I think this discussion should go, but if you have the opportunity to go through the well thought out article, it did not include anything other than relating to the finance committee. So I just do that as a clarification. I wasn't going to box the select board in on a citizen's petition, especially given COVID, but I think it's something that is important that we consider as a town going for. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Uh, do we have anybody else with a question or a comment related to the warrant? I am not seeing any hands, so I will give CC. Um, sorry, go ahead, CC.
Um, so the only thing that I wanted to, to add, this is more sort of, um, general information from my perspective, the fat, whatever we do to make sure that the, what's currently, what was being considered as article 25, which we've agreed is not, it's not before, it's not going to be on the spring warrant. When it's on the fall warrant, if it's on the fall warrant, we would make sure that it is appropriate. So I'm not going to touch on it because it's not being art, you know, it's not before the spring town meeting. But what I would like to sort of add, and I, I note that, um, Susan Klein indicated that the advisory board, um, would not support it. And, and, um, and I, and she was very clear that, you know, she wasn't going to speak for everybody, but it was her sense. Um, I just want it to be clear that the advisory board is an independent group from the select board and that I don't vote to put something on a warrant based upon what I think the advisory board might do, nor does the advisory board concern itself with what I might do. There are plenty of articles historically that have been before town meeting where the, um, advisory board was absolutely against it, um, or the select board was absolutely against it. And that becomes part of the discourse on the town meeting floor. So that's it.
Thanks, CC. Uh, Susan, I see that your hand, your hand up. Did you have something else to add or was that residual from the last time?
No, yes, I just wanted to make one additional comment, um, to Mr. Chitman, um, in response to what he said. He said that-
Hold on, Susan, Susan, uh, just direct your comment through the board, please. I know it's virtual and it's weird, but-
No, no, no.
Interacting directly between people.
Correct. It's not to Mr. Chitman, it is in response to something he said. So I'm, I apologize for wording it that way. Um, one of his points was that if they were appointed by the select board, just like the advisory board is appointed by the town moderator, they would have no allegiance. I was never insinuating that they would have any allegiance. I was spent simply speaking to oversight and the town moderator does not put forth warrants. So again, the select board does put forth warrants, including the budget. They decide what the budget is going to be that is presented at town meeting and then the finance would be working hand in hand with the finance committee. Jay Talerman, as our town moderator, puts forth no warrants, nor does he have any say in any of those aspects. So we wouldn't have an allegiance to Jay Talerman or any warrants he put forth or any moderator there, you know, that comes after him or has come before him, because they never put forth warrants, but the select board does. So that's what I meant by oversight. It needs to be an independent party, not appointed by anyone who's going to be putting warrants forth. That's what I meant.
Got it. Thanks, thank you, Susan. And Peter, I see that your hand is up, but this is a discussion that can preface our fall town meeting. This isn't something that we're going to add now and I don't know if hashing it out in this meeting is going to be of any value to anybody. So I'd like to table anything related to the proposal and move forward with executing this and I eagerly look forward to the robust dialogue that will surely come forth ahead of our fall town meeting.
Just one comment, clarification.
No, Peter, 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 we're not going to talk about this anymore. I appreciate it, but we got to move forward with the meeting. Uh, so I would move as chair that the board execute the warrant for the 2020 annual town meeting to be held on June 24th, 2020 at the KP High School in Rentham, as it is not possible to adequately conduct town meeting in a location within the geographic limits of the town in a manner that ensures health and safety. However, in the event that a court ruling or state legislation prohibits the town from conducting its town meeting at the KP Regional High School, then the alternative warrant shall be issued identifying KP Middle School as the meeting location. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Oh, whoa. Kevin, there's a newer, there's a newer motion that we sent out this afternoon. There's a newer copy of the, uh, agenda background that we sent out at like, uh, probably four o'clock.
Five's agenda background.
3:55?
Probably. There's, there's two motions. There's one to, um, to approve the filing of the court order and the second one is a revised motion, uh, with regard that it's the fact the court order was, uh, issued. I can read them.
Well, I, no, I printed it off. I have it. If it, do you want me to just-
So the, the first one is the one in accordance with general bylaws?
Yes. It's in Italian.
Okay, so that one needs to, okay, so that one needs to be first. So I move that the board, in accordance with the general bylaws, article for legal affairs, section one, authority of select board to institute prosecute and compromise suits grants approval and ratification with respect to the filing of a complaint in superior court for injunctive relief to enable the town to hold its 2020 annual town meeting outside of the boundaries of Norfolk. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, any further discussion? Hearing none? Roll call votes, all those in favor say aye. Kevin Calcutt, aye.
Christopher Weeder, aye.
CC Vantine, aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next, I move that the board execute the warrant for the 2020 annual town meeting to be held on June 24th, 2020 at the King Philip Regional High School in Rentham, as based upon consultation and approval by the town moderator and its review, and having received authorization from the Norfolk Superior Court, the select board has determined that it is not possible to adequately conduct town meeting in a location within the geographic limits of the town in a manner that ensures health and safety. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, roll call votes. Kevin Calcutt, aye.
Christopher Weeder, aye.
CC Vantine, aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, everybody, for your contributions to the warrant. I look forward to a fantastic spring town meeting, a safe spring town meeting. Um, and then I also look forward to further discussion related to any articles that have been pushed off until we meet next in the fall. Our next item this evening is to please consider authorizing the chair to execute a grant application for federal cares funding incurred in response to the COVID-19 outbreak. Blight, would you like to give us some background?
Yes, so, um, two weeks ago or so, the state sent out the information that's in your packet about the fact that of the CARES Act funds, they were designating to cities and towns $500 million of what came to the state for, uh, local costs related to addressing the pandemic, uh, whether it be, uh, purchase of, of PPE for essential workers, uh, cleaning products and disinfectants, um, and technology, um, items related to, uh, holding school remotely, there's a whole host of things. And so, um, also in that guidance was the details of what each town, uh, could, could be, could receive in total in this round of funding. And that's for Norfolk, it's $1,056,955. So since we received that, we have been gathering that data. We had already been gathering it as we had people code it through accounting system and the expenses that were applicable, um, both on the town side and for Norfolk schools. And the state is enabling, uh, all communities to apply in two rounds for this funding. Uh, we can apply, uh, between now and this Friday, June 5th. The first round for costs from, uh, March 20th until the end of June. And then we can apply again later in the calendar year, uh, because the funding, um, is for expenses through, uh, the end of December. Um, alongside this, uh, there's also the opportunity for, uh, FEMA, federal reimbursement funds of 75% of, of some particular costs. And so, um, the accounting department led by Todd Linmark have been incredibly busy, uh, calculating away and, and sorting how things will work. So he's, as you know, he's on the call and can give you, um, the nitty gritty detail that, um, that I don't have. But in general, uh, up till now, between town and school, we've spent approximately $100,000, um, in all those sorts of things. He could give you a little more granular detail than I can. And what we're looking for is the board's approval, authorization for the chair to execute the, uh, attestation to submit our application for the first round. And in essence, um, you know, refund to the town what we have spent to address these issues so far, um, as well as, um, estimate based on what we spent so far, what we'll spend through the end of, of June, um, which will enable us to, um, if those monies come in and out fairly soon, enable us to, um, kind of re- refill our coffers with money we hadn't planned to spend and, and help us end FY 2020 in a best financial position that we can. So let me stop there, um, with the overview and see if you have questions or you'd first like Todd to give you some more detail.
Um, I'm okay with moving forward with Todd. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to say now on the board?
Is, uh, Todd or Blight, are we going to, uh, are we going to see a breakdown of that $100,000 or before Friday, are you going to submit it on Friday? What's the plan? And will this become FY 21 free cash or how will this be? I imagine we will not receive these funds before the end of the fiscal year. So how will these funds be categorized as free cash or will we put it, will they become a production in our budget expenses for FY 21?
Perfect questions for Todd.
Sure. You got a lot of questions, Chris. I'll try and answer them all. So with respect to the breakdown of how the $100,000, it's about 104,000 that we've spent to date, 80 of it is on the town side and about 24,000 is on the school side. And I anticipate probably through June 30th, we'll spend probably another 26,000 and change. So looking at about $130,000, uh, through June 30th. Uh, from July 1st through December 30th, uh, we'll be able to, um, have a separate account set up and established for all the COVID related items for fiscal year 21. Uh, for the items that are here for fiscal year 20, the way that would work is we would put in the request as of June 5th. I would put in an accounting entry in to say we have a receivable coming in from the state, uh, whether we get it June or July, um, those monies would then be added in for free cash that would be certified as of September, uh, because the receivable would be for June 30th, um, that would be added in for the free cash is how it works now. Um, and then obviously not knowing what the expenses are going to be, um, going forward, you know, we're purchasing Plexiglas, uh, we may have to have additional bussing for the schools because of, uh, the kids needing, needing to be separated or what have you in order to accommodate them, uh, different classroom setups, um, ambulance supplies, all the PPE that we're going to require going forward. So that'll all be kept separately. Uh, anything that is FEMA reimbursable, we'll submit through the FEMA program directly. We'll get 75% reimbursed on that. So if we send in $100,000 that's related items, we'll get 75,000. Then we'll send in the 25% differential for the state reimbursement, which is what that million dollars, million 56 has been identified for Norfolk to have available and eligible. Is it guaranteed? No, nothing, I think in life has ever guaranteed. However, it has been identified and made available for us, uh, to utilize. So I think we should try and utilize to the best of our abilities based on the expenses that are, uh, necessary for this, um, directly related.
Great.
Do you have questions?
Thank you, Todd.
Todd, was there anything else that you were going to share in terms of detail?
Um, that's pretty much the detail. There's a lot of just processing that I had to do behind the scenes. Um, obviously Thursday, I have a complete listing of what the actual expenses are to date, along with my estimate through June 30th. Uh, and then just on a going forward basis, um, that's the application to the state that we'd be completing. And then there's an application that we have to do for federal, uh, FEMA reimbursement. I don't anticipate any hiccups. Uh, it was good news that we got the letter, there was identified that we had this money available for us. Uh, it's relieved a lot of the anxiety, both from the police, the fire department, um, PPW, maintenance department, the schools, uh, being able to not really know what's going on, um, because things are still fluid, things are still changing. But having this as a, a little bit of a backstop to help us out makes, um, all the sense in the world. So I'm, I'm glad it came through and glad we're able to utilize it. And it'll help Norfolk and, uh, you know, obviously won't impact the budget hopefully too much, because again, we're looking for reimbursement on those expenses that are related to it. And, you know.
Todd, could you give just a little more detail about the types of the, of things we spent money on, the, the categories, if you will?
Sure. PPP, PP, personal protective equipment, including the face masks as well as gloves, uh, all the disinfectant. We have, uh, special sprayers that cost several, uh, thousand dollars each, uh, for the application of, um, the, uh, materials that disinfects all the different offices, whether it's the library, the COA, town hall when we open up. We've, uh, spent monies on Plexiglas, uh, for accommodations at the town hall. Uh, there's been, um, monies that were spent on, uh, changing areas at the police station to allow, um, officers to be able to change, um, out of their, um, PPE gear. We had, uh, additional, um, costs incurred for internet access, because we had to increase the speed for internet, uh, with all the Zoom meetings that we have in. We also had to, uh, create accounts for the- We also had to create accounts for the Zoom accounts for all the different departments that they would have it. So all those expenses and the video cameras right up there, we had to purchase some of the video cameras. So those, all those expenses would fall, the technology expenses would fall under the state reimbursement program. PPE, masks, disinfectant, sprayers, things of that sort would fall under the FEMA, and then we would get the 25% differential from the states. Additional expenses that the school would be able to utilize it for is all the programming that they have to do school-wise, as well as technology, any laptops, or what have you in order to accommodate people being at home for the remote learning, things of that sort. So that helps out in that respect as well. And some of those, pretty much the majority of the expenses are related to those items.
Thanks.
In addition, we're going to have to probably order quite a bit of personal protective equipment, and we're going to have to do purchasing both school-wide, town-wide masks, additional sanitizing agents, things of that sort. So just beginning.
From my perspective, I, do you have a gauge, as I know you said at the end of June, you'll have a better idea as to how much we would have dedicated or spent that would be eligible for these expenses, but do you feel that we're going to come close to what we've been allotted in that grant or no?
Come close to using all of it?
Correct.
I have no idea. Again, I'm waiting for more information coming from the schools. That's going to probably be the biggest driver for us because again, accommodations with anything as far as the special education, what changes are required there, the busing transportation, if there's increased buses that are needed, how does that look? I have, there's a lot of unknowns, and Ingrid Alardi, Dr. Alardi, is on conversations, conference calls throughout the week with Desi and different programs to find out, you know, if they, if and when they open up again, what is it going to look like? What are they going to need? How are the classrooms going to be held? Who's, are they eating in the classrooms? Are they eating in cafeterias, things of that sort? So there's still quite a few unknowns. Again, FEMA, as long as they're directly related to FEMA costs, we get 75% there. So of this first round of 130, FEMA will probably pick up about 75% of it because again, some of it's IT, that's not FEMA relatable. But, so we're not going to really hit the $1,056 on this for go around. It might be about $25,000, $30,000 for the state portion that we'll get because the rest of its majority is FEMA related. And then going forward, if there's items that are FEMA related, i.e. the personal protective equipment, things of that sort, again, we'll get 75% federal, 25% from this million, unless it's IT or directly related, that FEMA is not going to reimburse. So I don't anticipate hitting all of it, but it's nice to know that it's there and available for us.
Got it. Thank you. Additional questions from the board? Chris?
Todd, does it also include what you're submitting on the 5th? Does that include some of the costs of legal counsel today for yesterday's court action? Can that be included? And how about the setting up of the high school for town meeting? Are those allowable costs as well that we'll be including?
I did not readily see whether they were readily available to be included as costs, but I can double check on those items.
Great.
The high school doesn't plan to send us a bill for holding town meeting there.
No, my question was if we're going to have to have staff setting up the high school that we wouldn't normally have, or if we're going to be disinfecting the high school, would those costs be eligible?
They're not planning to send us a bill for that. The regional high school is not planning to invoice Norfolk to have the meeting there. They're managing those costs directly.
So they're managing those costs within their FY 20 budget?
Correct.
But we normally wouldn't have those costs if we were having town meeting at the middle school. So, because obviously there's going to be extra precautions, so why wouldn't we try to put those funds also into this package?
Then we'd have to try, then we'd have to, we can figure out whether they can invoice us and we can pay them, we'll look into it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Chris. C.C.?
So I guess I'm just going to be echoing Chris a little bit because it occurs to me that usually when these things start, not municipalities, but with respect to the CARES Act, with respect to small businesses, et cetera, et cetera, they're pretty, it's, it's great that there's already an amount in place because they start out seemingly pretty liberal in terms of what they'll cover, and then as they run out of money, they tighten up. But I'm pleased that it doesn't seem that they will because they've sort of allocated the money in advance, assuming they don't run out of money. I think it's important to sort of note, because I'm sure there'll be folks thinking, oh, we've got this money. We don't, it's reimbursing for expenses we didn't anticipate and we will continue to have to deal with that we didn't anticipate. So I think it's important to remember that this isn't some found money that can be used for something else that may be jumping a fence, rushing the fence on town meeting. But I just think it's important for people to put that in their mind, this is to reimburse for things that we are expending due to COVID. And then kind of echoing Chris, it does seem that if the inclutable expenses were things like the legal fees for yesterday, the changes that need to be made for town meeting, not just the change in venue, but, and the staffing, but also the prep and the cleaning, that we would want to be in communication with KP, whether it was in the middle school or high school. KP school system is going to be taking somewhat of a financial hit due to Corona, and we're obligated to pay a portion of their budget every year so that if we can maybe be in communication so that we're helping ameliorate those expenses now and for the next year, you know, maybe that's, and I'm assuming, I haven't flipped through, but I'm assuming Brentham also has money, that everybody's going to have some money, that maybe everybody sort of talks with KP. It's great that they weren't going to hit us up with the expenses, that's wonderful, but that doesn't mean that they don't have the expenses and that that's going to impact their budget, which ultimately impacts us because we pay one-third of their budget. So those are just thoughts, they don't have anything to do with voting, just me mulling because I'm not in the room to mull with you.
Thanks, C.C. Do we have anybody who's joining us and in the resident audience who would like to ask a question related to the CARES Act funds? If so, please use the raise hand function. I am seeing none. So with that, I would move that the board authorize the Chair to make application to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for CARES Act funds to reimburse Norfolk for its necessary expenditures due to the public health emergency which began March 1st, 2020 to date. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, any further discussion?
Blythe, do we want to have that motion say March 1st, 2020 to date, or do we want to say that motion March 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2020?
You're on mute, Blythe.
I've gotten good at that. To June 30th, please, good catch.
All right, so we'll take a friendly amendment to make that March 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2020. Do we hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, hearing a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call votes. All those in favor, Kevin Calcutt, aye.
Christopher Weeder, aye.
C.C. Dantin, aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next up, we have please consider making appointments to various town boards and committees. Blythe, do you want to take us through our color wheel?
Yellow is where you're on tonight. So Judith has done a good job of working with Nancy and working with Carol and updating our appointments list. It's the time of year when the board does take those up. And so you'll find on the enclosed sheets those persons who, whose appointments are up as of June 30th, and we have checked in through the Chair of each relevant committee whether those folks would like to be reappointed or not. And so everyone that you see in yellow has indicated that they do wish to be reappointed. And that is the motion that we scripted for you tonight. As you recall from last year, we're probably going to do these in a couple of rounds because there are some vacancies that you'll see highlighted in gray. For instance, Conservation Commission has a vacancy that I think they have found somebody for. There are a number of vacancies on the Town Government Study Committee and for Cultural Council, I'm just going to name a few. There are some folks who by state law can only serve for a certain amount of terms before they have to step off for various reasons, and there's a column here that goes over those for you. And so most of these are citizens who wish to be reappointed. There is, the only other things I'll point out is that we have clarified that there is actually no Mass Corrections Advisory Committee. Mr. Roke shows up as a reappointment. We clarified with the DOC that there is no such committee we need to appoint anybody to. So that's a committee that doesn't need to be addressed at all. On the Animal Control Officer, as you know from the bylaws, that is a position that my, my role is to recommend. The person in yours is to affirm, and that would be Hillary Cohen. And we will need to speak with the Fire Department about the municipal hearing officer. The town clerk had been serving that role, and she wishes not to do so. So that is one that we need to work on billing. And then there are some joint appointments. The one that comes to mind is, obviously, Kevin has been serving as the Select Board's representative, he seeks reappointment, but Janine Dubuque, as we understand it, does not right now. So as I said earlier, the motion we would recommend is to reappoint everyone who's highlighted in yellow. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Blythe. We are about to undertake what will most likely be a very lengthy process and review, so I'm going to recommend that we take a three to four minute break so that people can get up, stretch their legs, practice their vocal cords, whatever you need to do, and we'll be back in just a moment to begin going through these. Does that sound good to everybody?
It sounds great. I want, before people start to chip, chime in and chip away at your recommendation, I want people to know that I'm the reason that you're taking this break because I inexplicably decided to do something called the 75 Day Hard Challenge, which requires a gallon of water a day, and, and I need to hit the head. So much appreciated, I'll be back in two.
We'll be back in just a moment. All right, I think we're getting everybody back now. Let's just see if we have our town administrator. We do. All right, so we have some reappointments to make. I would leave it up to the board what they think is best. Should we alternate committees for individual recommendation? Blythe, I see that you wrote the motion as a catch-all, anybody in yellow reappointing, but I don't believe that's intended to be the only way that we presented, correct?
It's a suggestion how we handled some of them last year, so.
Very good. So then I'll leave it to the board. We can go through and see if anybody has points of conversation for any of the individuals highlighted in yellow, and then make a motion at the end for the coverall if that is to the liking of the board. Chris?
I think, I think the way Blythe has it scripted is fine. I think, as C.C. had mentioned earlier in the evening, it's, it's hard to get people to take positions. So the fact that we have volunteers is a positive all in itself.
I'm with Chris.
C.C., any? Okay.
Anytime Chris agrees with me, I'm excited, so I like.
I agree with you all the time, C.C.
All right, so I mean, instead of going through each one, I'll just ask, does anybody have, anybody that is highlighted in yellow that they'd like to discuss further at this time? C.C., anybody from your end?
No.
Chris, anybody from your end?
Nope.
Very well. Then instead of going through each one, one by one, I move that the board vote to make the appointment to committees for the period beginning July 1st, 2020, to all those persons highlighted in yellow on the appointments list.
Second.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, any further discussion? I also did skip over the portion where we would open it up to any attendees for any questions or comments they have on appointments. I'm not sure what would be out there in particular, but I will give anybody who is in attendance tonight the opportunity with a question or comment for the appointment list this evening. I am seeing no hands. So with a seconded motion on the floor, I will do a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutt, aye.
Christopher Weeder, aye.
Dantin, aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. I don't know, I kind of miss going through each one, one by one, not going to lie.
So I would just, if I could just add, we will work to put an item up on the website just announcing the vacancies that we do have, you know, so that people can easily find the form and turn it in and let us know if they'd like to be considered.
Yep, that makes sense. You know, without having the individuals named as we go through them, I think you lose a little bit of a recognition for the time that people are putting in. So although we didn't go through them one by one, we greatly appreciate everybody giving their time to help the town. Thank you. All right, our next item this evening is to please consider setting the board's meeting schedule for 2020. Pretty cut and dry, Blythe, but anything you'd like to add?
Just that the board is typically met on the first and third Tuesday of the month, so I'm guessing that that still works for everybody. We are, you know, going into summer, but summer's going to feel just a bit different this year with all this going on, so I don't know if that impacts anybody's plans to extent you have them. So I just bring that up as something to consider.
Well, I do know that in other years, we typically have shifted to a once a month meeting schedule during the summer months because of, you know, battling vacations, time away, things of that nature. But you're right, this year presents its own unique set of circumstances. So. So I'm not sure if that's necessarily the case. As far as what we currently have scheduled, Blight, we have our next meeting scheduled for June 16th.
Correct.
And do we have meetings scheduled past that point?
Well, June 24th for town meeting.
Okay.
An extra meeting if you want to do it and we have the information to get restaurants approved for changing their license premise. That would come sooner, that would be the point of that.
Do you feel like, I'm sorry, do you feel like, given the current climate of everything that's going on, that we should maintain a twice a month meeting schedule throughout the summer?
I don't think so. Because, you know, I'm looking at my, I'm sorry, I'm looking down at my calendar, Labor Day is quite late this year. It's not until the 7th. I think you could easily have one meeting in July, and then we can see how the summer is going and whether we need to have two in August.
Very good. I'll throw to my fellow board members. Sorry, go ahead. I'll throw it to my fellow board members for their opinions, starting with Chris.
No issue, I think. If you want to go to once a month for the summer, that's fine, and then back to two in the fall, that's great. No issue.
Cece?
Well, I am going to agree with Chris Weider.
This is a very cohesive meeting we're having this evening. This is fantastic. All right. So Blight, let's stick with that plan. Let's, following town meeting, let's schedule one meeting for July, and then we can reassess and ensure that that's going to be our case going through August. But right now, the plan will be to have one meeting in August and to resume the two meeting schedule starting in September.
That's great. So perhaps at the meeting on the 16th, people can have had a look at their calendars to the extent they're full and figure out, we could figure out which is the best weeks to do those for everyone.
Very good. Thank you. I do see one hand raised, so Susan Klein, please go right ahead.
I am so sorry. This is not about your meeting calendar. I apologize, I raised my hand, but I think you moved on. It was done in the moment when you were moving on, and I apologize for that. I was just curious, because there's a lot of questions about who you're, I have no issues with you reappointing people, I'm just curious as to who they are. I know Hillary Cohen was mentioned. I'm not sure if she fell into this yellow highlighted category or not, and I think there's.
She absolutely did.
She did. Is there a way you can screen share it or send it to us?
It's available on the town's website under our packet.
It is available? Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Does anybody else have a question? No worries. Does anybody else have a question or comment related to the board's meeting schedule for the rest of 2020? All right. So I don't believe that we'll be making a motion right now. We'll solidify availability, and at our next meeting, we'll actually make the motion to take action on this item. Our next item this evening is to please consider executing proclamations for some Eagle Scouts. Blight?
So this is one of the nice things that the board gets to do, which is to recognize, you know, outstanding achievement. And in this case, it's for eight scouts who obtained the rank of Eagle Scout. Their scoutmaster, Adam Cambria, got ahold of us and let us know about this and what the scouts have all done to achieve this honor and their hard work, and asked that the board consider proclaiming a day for each of them in their honor so they can celebrate a little differently than they would have in the past. So in your packet are proclamations for each one of them, and in your motion, we actually have named each one of them. And what we've done is start the first proclamation on June 8th, next Monday, and then picked each business day after that in alphabetical order. That's how we came up with that. And as you see in your packet, the details of what each scout has done is included in their proclamation.
Very nice. Thank you, Blight. You know, typically, we would have the opportunity to join these young men in a presentation in a live forum and say some kind words about their contributions to the community and their achievements. Unfortunately, we're unable to do that now, so I am happy that we are able to do this small piece of recognition by giving them a proclamation that's assigned a day for their achievement, be able to recognize them. So I'll open it up to the rest of the board for any comments or questions, starting with Cece.
I think this is really cool. I'm just wondering, and maybe you would plan to do it, and I know it's online and stuff, but to your earlier point about it's nice to have people hear the names of the volunteers, is it worth reading? Because it's not, having just read two pages, it's not too bad if you just did the name and then skipped down to the paragraph of what they did, just to let people know. I mean, because Eagle Scout's a big deal. It's a ton of work. It'd be kind of cool for people just to hear what it is that each of these guys did to achieve that recognition.
I actually don't have a problem with that. We are moving pretty briskly through our agenda this evening.
That's what I was thinking. Usually, I would be the last person to come up with a suggestion that would prolong, but seems like we do have the time, and it shouldn't take too, too long. Without reading, I'm not suggesting by any stretch that you read, whereas blah, 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 but just as an example, I'll use him because he's first. Owen Thomas Clark Conlin had an Eagles project consisting of constructing of an office in the house basement, you know, et cetera, et cetera. Do you know what I mean? So it doesn't need to take, it wouldn't need to take that long.
Sure. So I would actually propose that since I'm still scrolling down to the actual proclamation, did you want to take the first couple?
Sure. I'd be, I'd actually be thrilled to take a couple and then turn it over. Maybe everybody can have a couple because it's pretty cool. So I'll take the first, so there's what, there's seven? I'll take the first two.
Sure.
So the first, as I sort of started, is Owen Thomas Clark Conlin, who's a resident of Norfolk. And he's a member of the Norfolk Boy Scouts, True Beatty, and he's held leadership positions, including Assistant Senior Patrol Leader, Patrol Leader Leave No Trace Trainer, and possesses 24 merit badges. And his project for Eagle Scout consisted of constructing an office in the house basement of always hoped sober home for women in North Attleboro for use by the House Manager Administrator. The work entailed clearing out the area, sanding wood beams and floorboards, and cleaning walls and floors. Following cleanout and prep work, Owen and his crew made walls, installed Pergo flooring, designed and constructed a desk, and finished with the installation of a door and file cabinets. This was done in an old house with a basement of lower height. It is thought by some that the hard hat was invented here. And that's incredible. And then the next gentleman that I have is Christopher Alejandro Courier, and he's a member of True Beatty, and he has held the following leadership positions: Den Chief, Patrol Leader, Leave No Trace Trainer, Instructor, Quartermaster, Assistant Patrol Leader, and possesses 23 merit badges. And his project consisted of designing and building a Serenity Garden, complete with waterfall and perennial plantings, as part of the overall landscape design for Gillie's House, a supported recovery residence for young men in Rentham. Well done.
Chris, did you want to take the next couple? And I'll take the last three.
Sure. Nicholas Peter Dadas, and he also had received 21 merit badges. Nicholas Peter Dadas' project consisted of cleaning 70 gravestones in the Norfolk Cemetery. The sponsor was the Historical Society, and they requested that Nick and the scouts be trained to clean the stones in the oldest part of the cemetery. It was very exciting when the scouts saw names appear on these stones after their hard work. It was a very rewarding project. And next one was Casey Ryan Frommer. Casey received 31 merit badges. Casey's project consisted of restoring, restarting the beekeeping program at Norfolk Agricultural High School. He trained to be a beekeeper and then refurbished bee boxes and established two bee colonies. The beekeeper program will continue at the high school.
The first one that I have is Brendan Thomas McLaughlin. Brendan held leadership positions, including Instructor, Assistant Patrol Leader, Den Chief, and possesses 31 merit badges. His project consisted of creating a Millstone Foundation and surrounding Tranquility Garden at St. Mark's Episcopal Church in Foxborough. It'll be used by the church community, as well as other groups such as recovery programs that use the church to meet. The next one is Adrian Miguel Mercado. Adrian has held leadership positions, including Instructor, Patrol Leader, Den Chief, and possesses 21 merit badges. His project consisted of constructing and installing a platform behind our Redeemer Childcare Center. The platform was made to provide the youngest kids a solid level spot for outdoor activities. Adrian used to attend our Redeemer, and he was happy to give back to the childcare center. And the last one that we have is Michael Thomas Norberg. Michael has held leadership positions, including Assistant Senior Patrol Leader, Patrol Leader, Instructor, Scribe, and possesses 29 merit badges. His project consisted of cleaning up and making enhancements to the cross-country course behind King Philip Middle School. The cleanup included removal of trees that had fallen on the course, pruning of low-hanging limbs, and trimming of encroaching bushes. The enhancements included new directional signage, granite start and finish line, and inaccurate measurement of the course. So gentlemen, congratulations to all of you. Thank you for your contributions to the community, and congratulations on your day.
Kevin, I think we had one more.
Somebody said seven before. We're not going to say who, but I will be happy to recognize Tristan August Stefani. Let me say it one more time, I'm sorry. Tristan August Stefani. Tristan has held leadership positions, including Patrol Leader, Instructor, and possesses 26 merit badges. His project consisted of building a 100-foot privacy fence on the property line at Gillie's House in Rentham, a sober house for men. This was provided, this was to provide privacy for the neighbors as well as for the residents at Gillie's House. This project helped to fulfill a requirement for Gillie's House to be able to open to residents. So once again, thank you, gentlemen, very much for your contributions. We're deeply appreciative, and congratulations on your achievement. With that, I will get back to our motion. And I would move, I'm sorry, before I do that, I do see one hand up. Mr. Rosenberg, go right ahead, sir.
In glancing through the proclamations, I saw one thing that I believe was a typo. One of the people was referred to as an Assistant Patrol Leader, and I think that that probably should be Assistant Patrol Leader. So just typo. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. Which proclamation was that, so if you get it corrected?
I'll look through them and get back to you. I'll put it in the chat when I find it, so that I don't.
Much appreciated. Thank you, sir. I am not seeing any other hands, so I would move that the board execute proclamations for Owen Conlin, Christopher Courier, Nicholas Dadas, Casey Frommer, Brendan McLaughlin, Adrian Mercado, Michael Norberg, and Tristan Stefani in recognition of their attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second. Any further discussion? We are hearing none. We will take a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutt, aye.
Christopher Weider, aye.
Cece Van Tyn, aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Our next item this evening is to please discuss the status of changes to the FY21 budget to achieve reductions approved by the board. Blight, go right ahead.
Good. So thank you. I wanted to just keep the board informed about what we're doing to reduce the budget ahead of town meeting on June 24th. It's still a work in progress. We're not done with it yet, but just to keep everybody up to speed, the $983,000 we had previously determined would be divvied up between, I'd say, four groups. Just over $380,000 of it is the MECC assessment. We are planning to carry one quarter of the assessment in our budget for now, just in case there's a reason that we need to make the first payment, though I have a MECC board meeting tomorrow morning at 8:00, and I still believe everything's on track to have that in place for July 1. But just to be on the abundance of caution, we're going to leave a small amount in there in case we need to spend it. We would reduce the budget later in the fall before we subtax rate if we don't. Norfolk share, town departments, non-school would be just under $205,000, Norfolk schools just under $285,000, and KP schools just under $113,000. For both of the school departments, I'm not able to give you the details of how they are closing that. They are working on those on their own, and I'm sure that both super tents can bring us up to speed on that at the appropriate time when they've finished addressing that. For the town side, we have started meeting with all, we have had meetings with all four of our unions last week, and we are planning to have another round of meetings this week. And we have brought to them a proposal to take a partial reduction in what they've negotiated for increases for FY21 and asked them to table it in July, so we can reduce the budget by those amounts. And same would be done for myself and non-union employees across our side of the organization. And the goal being that if everybody takes a small reduction, we can achieve the overall amount of $205,000 that we need to, to balance the budget with what both the Select Board and the Advisory Committee want to recommend at town meeting. And then understanding from previous votes that if the budget, if the revenues from the state and our own local receipts come in better than expected, those could be voted to be restored in the fall. And if not, or the situation is worse, we haven't spent some money, and we can then address any other changes that we need to make. My goal is to keep in services across the organization for our residents intact as much as possible, and we're hopeful that our unions will work with us on that. I feel very positive about working with them and that they understand what we're facing. And though many of them are on the front lines providing essential services, they too care about, you know, our community and keeping it healthy. But, you know, I'm not assured that that's done yet. I hope to have that resolved later this week. But if not, we will have to make adjustments in positions because I feel like we, for the most part, have already reduced accounts and expenses where we can in earlier rounds of the budget. And I'm not, and I never like to simply lower an account just to make the numbers work now and have, you know, a structural deficit. I think that's an appropriate thing to do. So what will we be looking at? We will be looking at overall amount of public safety staffing. We do have some vacancies that will be created in the Police Department, though we're already going to be in a situation this year where in order to get people into the academy, it's going to take, we're going to have some running light at least over the first half of the year, and that's, that's something to be mindful of. So I'm not, can't really say whether it's a position or it's just generally number of man hours, people hours overall. I would also look to, we have been trying to keep in the budget a positioning grounds from DPW. Due to retirements we've had and positions we haven't filled, we wanted to keep, add one position in order to be able to better address the workload overall. But in a difficult situation, we would look to eliminate that. And then we'll probably need to go further than that and look at either reductions in positions or reductions in hours that people work. Say someone works 40 hours a week, perhaps we would lower that by some number of hours in order to create, achieve the $200, sorry, $205,000 overall. So that's the work that Todd and I and Scott are doing aggressively right now, and we will solve this one way or another by the meeting that you have on the 16th, so that we can advise you and tell you and advisory where we are in terms of what exactly reductions mean, and we can explain them at town meeting.
Thanks, Blight. If I could for just a moment, I'd like to provide a little bit of feedback with my liaison to the Advisory Committee cap on. Over their last two meetings, Over their last two meetings, the advisory committee took the budget, the budget under consideration and had some fantastic dialogue associated to, uh, not only the proposal that was put forth before them, but also to, uh, some alternatives, uh, that would increase funding with a couple of creative uses related to our stabilization fund, uh, the entirety of our free cash, um, and even, uh, the mention of an override. Through some feedback and some return of data from Blythe and Todd, uh, they ended up requesting a budget that reflected a 1.5% increase, uh, that would have restored funding to the schools and town departments and would focus on, uh, the MECC money coming out and the KP school reduction, as we are in a partnership with two other towns that had already agreed upon that amount. Um, but after some dialogue, uh, the final vote, I believe, was a five to three with one member not in attendance to support the original proposal by our select board. So we do appreciate their dialogue. Uh, we do appreciate their creativity, um, and we do appreciate the time that they spent in their research and diving into other alternatives that we could present to the community. Uh, that being said, I'll take a break from talking for a quick moment. Uh, C.C., any questions or comments related to the budget strategy outlined here?
No.
Chris?
Nope, I think it's, uh, I think it's a good strategy Blythe's employing. I think if we can get the unions to agree, this will be great. We'll be able to keep the level of service and, um, everybody will share in this.
Absolutely. And one other thing I will add is when we first voted on this budget, I believe it was on May 5th. The last projections that we were seeing from the state's perspective was somewhere around the tone of $4.4 billion in revenue shortfall. Since that time, I do believe that it's been upped to over $6 billion in expected shortfalls. So whereas, um, this, this outline and the strategy could have been perceived as being aggressive at that time, uh, I do believe that as we start to get a closer number as to what to expect, we are falling more towards the more reasonable reaction to, um, how we're going to be operating if that does come to fruition in the fall. Um, I will open it up to anybody in the audience. Should they have any questions or comments related to the budget strategy? If you do, please use the raise hand function. I see Susan's iPhone. Go right ahead.
Hi, Susan Klein, 11 Keeney Pond. Um, is, just for a point of clarification, are you still going to be discussing the extra money from retiree health benefits, or is that built in at this point, or have you decided not to build that in? Just for clarification.
That is our next agenda item.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Do we have any other questions or comments related to the budget strategy? I am seeing none. Blythe, anything else you'd like to add? I'm getting a head shake, no. So we've been moving on to our next item this evening, which is to please discuss future changes to the premium cost share for retiree health insurance.
So I've included in your packet at your request, Kevin, the information that the board has seen before and what the options are. We have not factored into the budget, the nine, the 205,000, any changes in this. Um, I think you, if I recall correctly, you'd asked me to put this on the agenda just to keep it as a placeholder, if you will. Um, you know, if, if, if what we're seeing at the state gets worse in the fall and further cuts are made, perhaps that's something the board would want to consider revisiting to balance the budget if we have to, uh, make other changes at a later point.
Thank you, Blythe. That's right. Uh, the last time that we discussed this option, uh, when we were going through a varying slew of ways that we could get creative with our budget to mitigate the negative impacts of COVID, um, the board's position was that although we are much higher than some of our neighbors and other municipalities around the Commonwealth in terms of this town's contribution versus the, uh, in, in the retirees' contribution, uh, we didn't believe it was appropriate for this to be the first step that we take to help mitigate those negative impacts. So I believe that we all agreed that we would table this discussion until such a point where things were so dire that we needed to spread the effort out to as many different areas as possible, uh, to be able to absorb what would be coming down the pike. Uh, now we're at a point where I believe that we've agreed upon taking a tiered reaction and what we've considered, for lack of a better term, as tier two. Um, and, you know, our position was that if we ended up going to a tier three reaction where revenues came in even lower than what we've accommodated for with this strategy, uh, then we would bring up this item for further consideration. Um, so I did want to, since we have solidified this as a strategy, and we have heard the input from our advisory committee, I, I thought it important for us to review and just reaffirm our position as to when the application of a measure like this would be required. Uh, so at this time, I'll open it up to the rest of the board for their thoughts, um, starting with Chris.
Yeah, I'm a little miffed at, at this, Kevin, because I think a month ago, we all agreed that this would, I don't remember this being a tier two or tier three. I remember this being, yes, open for discussion if we had to. But I think that also includes all other possible savings. And I'm just surprised that this one item is the only tier two or tier three item we're discussing. If we're going to have an honest discussion about areas we can save money, I would have liked to have thought we had more than one that we're going to look at over the next couple of months. For some reason, this has a little bit of a political tone to it. Um, I've heard it brought up a number of times at advisory. I heard it brought up just a few minutes ago, and, um, I'm very concerned that this has a political tone to it. And one thing I do not want to see is that our senior retirees become a political pawn in an election year. I think I heard the comment, if you're going to talk, the talk. You gotta walk the walk. If you want to walk the walk, you gotta talk the talk. I think a couple of people should do some walking. They should walk down to Johnson Way and see Police Chief Sam Johnson's wife, who's in her 90s. Ask her what she thinks of this. They should walk over to Holbrook Street and see Mrs. Prebet, who served town government for over 20 years, and ask her what she thinks of this. They should walk down Main Street and talk to Cheryl Kelly, who worked as our tax collector and in our treasury department, and her husband, Chief Kelly, whose son serves distinguishedly on our fire department and whose father was one of our fire chiefs. I think if you want to go even closer, go over to North Street and see Bob McGee and ask him what he thinks the effects of this would be on him as a recent retiree. It is no coincidence that Norfolk is what it is today because of the work and dedication of the current people, but of our retirees. They worked five-day weeks. They didn't get lucrative contracts. They didn't get car allowances. They put their time in, and we told them that we would take care of them in this manner. I certainly do not want to see them become a pawn because certain individuals want to try to use this as a campaign or an election year strategy. This community's better than that. This board is certainly better than that. And I think any changes at this time to that, to those individuals would be catastrophic and completely unfair. And again, I voiced my opposition to the fact that why this one singular item has been brought up? And why isn't there other items? Or why don't we table and have all the possible budget savings for a really fruitful discussion? Not just this one? So I'm very concerned at the way this arrived at our meeting floor again, and I hope that there, this does not have a political undertone.
Uh, Chris, can you confirm that at our last meeting that we reviewed this item, we all did agree that we would further address this should we get to a worse or more dire situation in hopes of spreading out the mitigation efforts?
I, I think, I think, and if you look at the April, I think it's April 26th, meeting minutes that we'll be reviewing tonight, we said, and I think C.C. was the one who brought it up, that if we get to a dire situation, everything's on the table. We did not clearly identify this one specific item as a tier two or tier three item. This one item seems to be a constant issue of the advisory, certain advisory board members, and again, was brought up tonight.
Okay. So the reason why it was added to this agenda was to reaffirm that it is not part of our reaction at this time. It is not for reconsideration. It is not an action item. It is a discussion item. So the intent was to reaffirm that our position is that in our current strategy, this item does not have a place, unless somebody had a differing opinion.
I don't know why we'd have to reaffirm when we already affirmed last month that it wasn't on the table, so why would we reaffirm tonight that it is not on the table either? Do we want, do, is there other items we want to reaffirm? It doesn't make sense to me that we reaffirmed it last month. Why would we have to do it again?
It was something that was brought up during a previous meeting. We wanted to make sure that we were clear about which segment of our response it was in. That was the reason why it was added as a discussion item and not as an action item to be included in this budget at this time. So I understand where the perception could come from, that it does have a different point or a different backing behind being included, but as chair and as the one who built this agenda, the only intention was to be able to clearly identify where in our responses this falls. That is all. So I will take it from your statement that you agree that it should not be part of this piece, and, but it should be included in further reactions should things become more dire. Is that correct?
Any, every, every item in the budget, it will be open for discussion if our, our situation becomes more dire.
Thank you. C.C., your thoughts and concerns?
So I think, um, my recollection, I know the minutes are, are there. My recollection was that, I think I was reacting to someone who was essentially saying that they were outraged that we would even consider cutting, um, this particular item. And my reaction then is my reaction now, that when you are in a situation like we are currently in, everything is on deck, everything, including this, but not just this. And I get it's not on deck right now, but I would have expected, or it was my expectation that while Blythe is attempting to make all of her members work within the, uh, the parameters that, that were given, inclusive of working with unions, if that doesn't come to pass and we have to revisit everything, uh, we're revisiting everything inclusive of this and everything else, not just this. Um, so I'm not going to say that I don't think that it's for this budget because it was my understanding that while Blythe wasn't going to cut it, if she could make all the other pieces work, if all of the other pieces don't work, I think everything is for consideration. So I'm not going to carve anything out. Um, and I, I don't know about any tiers that either, I, I'm not familiar with that term, but I do think that in the event that Blythe is able to work the miracles that she's been working and we get the budget without having to make any further cuts other than what was in, was already anticipated and has already been discussed, um, which I suspect that she will do, um, if we need to add a special, at Fall Town Meeting or, or earlier at a special, make further cuts because of the pandemic, this is on the table. Yep, it is, as is everything else. Um, and so I understand that you, um, were putting this on for a, a particular reason that did not have, was not targeting this, but was, um, but I'm just going to sort of make it more of a scattershot and say that in the event that, um, we still can't function because of the loss of revenue, even after we've, you know, sort of entered into a somewhat arguably draconian budget, everything, including this, would be, um, would be considered. But I wouldn't, I don't know about tiers or anything. I think everything is on the table, inclusive of this, at any time that we can't, um, make the numbers work, so.
Very good. Um, so I think that what I'm hearing is that, you know, while in our current strategy, should everything fall into place as anticipated, we do not anticipate leveraging this as an additional option for offset of negative impact. Uh, if we do get into a situation where our current strategy does not come to fruition in terms of our negotiations with our union partners and whatnot, um, that we would start looking to additional measures that could include, um, something of this nature. And we can reserve the dialogue and debate about what would be included in said measures at that time should be necessary. Is that an accurate portrayal of where we are as a board right now, or does somebody disagree? I'm seeing a head shake from C.C. Chris? Uh, I think that was a yes, okay? Um, so at this time, I'll open it up to questions and comments from those in the audience. If you would like to share a question or a comment, please use the raise hand function. Susan, go right ahead.
Hi, Susan Klein, 11 Keeney Pond. Since I was addressed specifically, I would like to point out that I am in no way making this political. Um, and as a member of the advisory board, this was discussed prior to COVID, prior to any of the budget discussions, has nothing to do with anything that has come up lately. Um, and I, of course, in any way would want to save retiree health benefits. However, once it was deemed that we are cutting current employee salaries and the, the board had at that point voted this down, I raised this question of if you're in favor of cutting current employee salaries and benefits, why would this 121, I believe is the number that Blythe had said, correct me if I'm wrong, $121,000 savings be on the table? It is within the guidelines presented by the state. We are at this point overpaying in our share of health insurance for retirees. We are paying 65% and the state recommended level, it, I shouldn't say it's the state recommended level, let me correct that before anyone speaks up. This, the state allows you to be at 50%. So if we're talking about cutting money and we want to find all of the savings we can, why isn't this on the table? This has nothing to do with politics. This has nothing to do with anything. I have no agenda here. I'm not a retiree, nor am I a town employee, but if we want to start naming people who are going to be affected, I'm quite sure we can name the current chief of police, the current DPW directors, all of the DPW employees, as well as the numerous teachers who live in our town, specifically Allison Cluedear, specifically many, many, many others that live here who would be affected, who are not only employees but residents. So I think that's very disheartening to say that I am specifically not caring about those specific people. What I'm saying is, is if we are at a point that we are cutting the pay of current employees, it should also be on the table to go down to the recommended state level for retiree health insurance benefits. This is not taking anything away from anyone in any further way than what you are already currently recommending that we take away from people. I have no, no agenda here. I'm, I have no horse in this race other than to point out that it is unfair to ask current employees to take pay cuts when you would not consider this. And this was done, as, as Kevin, you know, this was a, and Blythe knows, this was an issue that was raised months ago. This has absolutely nothing to do with any agenda, and I, for one, I'm not sure who said the comment. I don't know if that was directed at me or if that was somebody else. I never said anything about put your money where your mouth is, and I'm not campaigning for anything, and I'm not running for anything. So I, again, have no political agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Susan. I, I think we get the gist of everything. Appreciate your comments. Um, one thing I will add is, you know, while the measures on the table would indeed remove the increases for our union employees, um, on the flip side of that, we would be increasing the cost for our retirees. And while in a perfect world, we prefer that none of that needs to happen, uh, one could argue that the, the cuts to those who have a fixed income, uh, who are at a different stage in life, um, could be more impactful. Now, I'm not going to get into individual situations because I know everybody has their own thing going on at this time, but I think that to generalize that one group of people deserves to be hit and one group of people doesn't is a difficult thing to do. Um, it's definitely not an easy conversation. It's definitely not one that I've enjoyed having, um, but I think it is one that requires us to weigh the pros and cons for each of that requires us to weigh the pros and cons for each of the groups being impacted. So I appreciate your input, appreciate your comments, and appreciate the range of dialogue at the advisory committee as well. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? I'm seeing no hands. And with that, we will be moving on to our next agenda item this evening, to please discuss reopening plans for town buildings. Blythe?
So I'm looking forward to this part of the meeting, because we are working on reopening to serve our residents. We have, I asked both Matt Hafner and Todd, and excuse me, Scott Ragan to take the lead on this, both from the facilities perspective of how do we get ready and be safe, and then from the HR perspective, how do we make sure that we have all of the, our ducks in a row in terms of what we have to do and make sure the people have all the, all the rules are in place, all the procedures are in place, and so on. So in your packet is our pretty close to final reopening policy. And our intent is to start slowly, but start with being open in Town Hall at some point next week by appointments. We have taken time and spent some of those CARES Act Bima dollars to move the town clerk's office back down to the ground floor, install some plexiglass in places, and set up what was the clerk's office as a meeting room for anyone who wants to come in and meet with an employee and conduct some business one-on-one. And we'll also, we've already started, and we'll continue to bring employees back to be working more in the office, the assessor's office, which was really able to work primarily off-site. The assessor is back this week, and we're going to continue to ramp that up. But in doing so, as you probably have heard in the news, we have responsibilities like any other business to have procedures for employee screening and making sure that people are able to come into work each day, that we have procedures for how we're making sure people are distanced while they're there. We've moved some desks around, and making sure that the folks who come in to see us, you know, understand what they have to do, i.e. wear a mask unless they have an underlying health condition. And so I think we are going to be one of the first in our area. But for Town Hall, like I said, we are meeting tomorrow morning with department heads to go over all this and make sure everybody's on board, knows what they need to do. We have time to provide all the training to everybody. But we would, again, start to reopen by appointment some point next week. And then, as the state moves through its phases, we plan to do so as well by going from being open by appointment, perhaps, you know, having doors open and people being able to flow in and meet and conduct their business at a counter in the future, to the point where some, some point, hopefully over the summer, we can be, quote, "back to whatever the new normal is going to be." At the same time, as you know, the library's already started for the state order to start offering herbicide service this past weekend. They have. And the COA, we're working through all of the things that we need to think we have to, we need to consider, you know, what types of activities can we do. And for there, we're considering that perhaps people need to sign up for things. They can't just drop in, because that's hard to manage. And what types of services that we offer, can we do that with? And how do we handle things as simple as, are we going to have, you know, communal coffee for people to walk up and use, or do we have to do that differently? So we're working through those things. And I expect that they will open, probably, staff is now back there. For public, we're going to go a little more slowly, because there's more to work out there. Making adjustments at DPW to serve people who want to come there, especially as we transition to our new way of trash bags instead of stickers. And probably last will come police and fire, just given the nature of their work. So I just wanted to give you all an early look. We'll spend the rest of this week on training, getting all the posters up we need to have, making sure we have some thermometers, take temperatures if we need to, changing our signage. But our, but our plan is to start next week, and hopefully, you know, the numbers stay well in Norfolk, and it goes well, and we can continue to work towards getting back to the way things used to be, to the extent that we can. So just wanted to give you a heads up about all that, because we're excited.
Thanks, Blythe. Any questions or comments from the board, starting with Cici?
No.
Chris?
Nope. It looks like a pretty comprehensive order, so it looks great.
At this time, I'll open it up to anybody in attendance. If you could, please use the raise hand function. Mr. Rosenberg, go right ahead.
I'd like to request that the reopening plan explicitly deal with public use of the meeting rooms in the library as distinct from other library services, and perhaps talk about social distancing requirements for groups meeting in the meeting rooms. But I think that meeting rooms are a different situation than borrowing materials from the libraries, and would be helpful if that were separately called out. Thank you.
Make sense to you, Blythe?
Yes, I need to work with Libby and the library trustees. I don't, as I said earlier in the meeting, I don't expect them to open to people coming into the building until probably July, but I'll make sure that she's aware of that. And then, once we know what it is, we're, we're working on putting up a separate webpage on our website where we can put all this information. And so as soon as that's available, we'll get that up there.
Thank you.
Thanks, Blythe, and thank you, David. Does anybody else have a question or comment for our reopening plan's agenda item? I am seeing none. And we'll be moving on. Our next item this evening is our Town Administrator Update. Take it away, Blythe.
Get back to that. So as we continue to try to find ways to save a little money, make a little money, DPW went live with the auctions. I think I told you about that last week. It closed today. We thought we would bring in about $10,000 for about seven or eight vehicles. We brought in $17,600. So, and the goal of every little bit helps, cleaning out some old stuff and bringing a few bucks into the coffers. As you may recall, we were, we were planning to do an auction of real estate earlier this year. We were going to do that in May, but the pandemic also derailed that. We are looking at regrouping and doing that in the fall. So we'll keep you apprised of that as well. Just a reminder, I should have brought this up earlier. The moderators' meeting to plan for Town Meeting is scheduled for next Wednesday, June 10th, at 9:30 in the morning. We will be advertising, you know, the Zoom meeting for that. I'm not sure who's setting it up yet. We're still working on the details. But those who need to be there, or would like, the moderator would like to be there, have been alerted to that time. So I just wanted to remind you of that. And then, the Affordable Housing Trust made a bid for a property on Leland Road, and that bid was accepted. So we will, the town will be purchasing a property there. The end of June, it's gone to purchase and sale. So we'll be working through a process to turn that around, to, to hold a lottery and be able to sell that to a family who meets the affordability guidelines. So that's a little bit of good news there. And lastly, we have, as you, if you've been down Lake Street, you know that we have done the first course of paving. We had planned to get out there and follow that up with the drainage work per the conservation order conditions. We've had some questions raised by one of the abutters about where we can do work and where we can't. So we've had to hit the pause button on that for a little bit, get town council involved, but we're hoping to resolve that in the next few weeks and get back out there to finish that job. But otherwise, it's going well. And those are the things I wanted to keep you updated. Otherwise, the agenda was a good overview of what's keeping us busy these days.
Great news. Thanks, Blythe. Glad to hear, especially if that Lake Street is making some progress. I'll open it up to the rest of the board for any questions or comments related to the Town Administrator's Update, starting with Chris.
Not at this time.
Cici?
No, nothing at this time.
Very good. Thanks again, Blythe. Our next item this evening is to approve some warrants. Chris, I do believe you are up first.
Right. Make a motion to approve the following warrants, 510-2020, in the amount of $2,588.26, and on 522-2020, in the amount of $823,545.05.
Second.
Hearing a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor with a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutt, aye?
Christopher Weider, aye.
Cici Van Tine, aye.
And Cici's up.
I move that the following warrants be approved, May 26, 2020, $361,177.73, and May 26, 2020, $67,046.93.
Second.
Hearing a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Kevin Calcutt, aye?
Christopher Weider, aye.
Cici Van Tine, aye.
And our last item this evening is the approval of some minutes. Take it away, Cici.
I move that the board approve the minutes for the April 7, 2020, and the April 21, 2020, regular meetings.
Second.
We hear a second. Hearing a second. Any further discussion?
No.
We're hearing none. So we'll take one more roll call vote. Kevin Calcutt, aye?
Christopher Weider, aye.
Cici Van Tine, aye.
Thank you very much.
You have another roll call vote coming, Kevin.
What's my other, oh, to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Well, before we adjourn this evening, I'll just go around the horn very quickly, see if anybody has anything else. Blythe, anything else for the group?
Yes, and we'll keep in touch with you about how we're doing with our restaurants and whether or not we're ready to ask you to have a meeting before the 16th to approve anything so they can get, they can get back to work.
Very good. Thanks, Blythe. Chris, anything else?
Blythe, I don't know if you know the answer of Todd's, still with us. How did we do with the tax collections yesterday? They had a chance to see where we are with regard to tax collection.
I did chat with Anne Marie briefly. She said that everything was, she felt was going well. She didn't seem too concerned that there were any particular, or people who hadn't paid or not than is usual. But I will follow up with her in the morning.
Great.
Cici, anything else for the group?
Nope, nothing. Have a great night.
Very good. So our next meeting will be on June 16th, and that will be the last meeting of this board before Town Meeting. So with that, if I hear no objections, I will make a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Kevin Calcutt, aye?
Christopher Weider, aye.
Cici Van Tine, aye.
Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great night.
Thank you.